And sell, they can land on, on the market at three AM in the morning, take their crops in and they can usually sell out by ten and they're back to their farms. So it's a great opportunity. We're also partnering with W N C communities on a grant program for the ag option recipients. They will be able to come on in that shed for free because that's going to be a grant program that we're helping those startup farmers. Market shop A and B towards the front of the property is retail. Those are our value add packaged goods retailers and vendors. And you know, Jesse Israel Garden Center, it's been there for over forty seven years, landmark on the, on the property and Moose Cafe Restaurant. If you look at this entire facility, the thing, if I can just have you kind of put the lens on, think of this as like a giant grocery store. I mean, this has all the aspects of a grocery store in terms of having produce, value add products and services, a restaurant, a nursery, there's a lot of things there that tie in to grocery retail. I know I take that look on it. The one thing about grocery retail is it's well signed. When you go into a grocery store, you can read the signs and go around. When I came on the market in June of twenty twenty, I couldn't find my way around the market, neither could our consumers. So we invested eighty five thousand dollars into a wayfinding package that all the sheds now are clearly marked with a number and, and an ID. Two reasons, one, that we can help consumers shop on the market and, and number two, for emergency services. We had an incident where the, the ambulance stopped the gatehouse to try to figure out where, where to go. Now these maps are provided to emergency services. So if there's a nine one one call on the market, they know exactly where to go and we're doing everything we can to sustain not only the operation of the business, but do it in a safe way and, and take care of our guests on the market. Next slide. Investment in terms of advertising, we've been on edible Asheville print. That's our primary print medium in, in the market. A V L today, digital media. We're constantly on Facebook and Instagram highlighting our local farmers and our vendors on the market. We also are tied into Explore Asheville on the event calendar. We have four primary events on the market each year. Last year I ran eighteen consecutive weeks of radio, plus we had the holidays on A V L, uh, radio stations, Kiss Country, M P R and W N C W. Why do I bring that up? We delivered additional ninety seven thousand guests on the market last year. That was over thirty thousand vehicles. So when we run our events and we're promoting the market and we're putting our farmers front and center, we get attraction from our, from our community. This is going to blow you away. Last year was the first time that we tracked commodities coming on the market. So what we did when any of our wholesale trucks, vendors and farmers came on, we looked at their bill, bill of lading, we recorded what they were bringing on the market, even if it was a small farmer. I've got twenty five bushels of corn. So we would track that information. Last year as we closed out, we started in February twenty twenty two, we went through January twenty three, we tracked thirty million, two hundred and forty five thousand dollars plus in produce coming on the market. What's that economic impact on, and this, this vegetable sector multiplier is from N C State with their figuring in terms of which total impact both, and this is all wholesale numbers, by the way, so it's not retail. So that adds into the total economic value at sixty two million dollars in total economic impact. On the job sector side, for, it's ten point one employees per million dollars. So we're looking at about three hundred and five employees or three hundred and five jobs. That tracks pretty well and we're in season when we have all of our farmers and vendors just on the market and all of their employees, it's right around three hundred. It could be more than that, but at least it gives us some data now that we can look at what we're doing and, and total economic impact. Let me talk about Christmas. I bet you guys didn't know this, December twenty two, twenty two, we contend we're probably the largest Christmas tree market in the southeast, but here's the numbers. We tracked and sold through twelve thousand, eight hundred and eighty five Christmas trees during, uh, two weeks in November going into December. On an average cost per square foot of fifteen dollars a foot, average height six point five, that's one point two million dollars in Christmas trees that went through the market in thirty days. Vendors reported in what their sales were on Christmas, Reese alone was fifty six thousand dollars and Garland, they sold ten thousand, eight hundred and eighty eight dollars. When we have an event like going back into the April timeframe, just to give you a highlight or Spring Festival, we had eight thousand, four hundred and eighty four vehicles enter the market. We had twenty one thousand guests during that three day period. So you can start to see the magnitude of which this market generates activity, can generate activity and support, not only within Buncombe County, but in Western North Carolina. So what we did on those numbers is strip those out so we could look at just produce value because that's kind of tracking with just the farmers. Our market share across, and this is the, uh, Asheville M S A, Buncombe County, Henderson, Haywood, Madison, we looked at all the households with the spend on produce for the total in this region for years, a hundred and eighty two million dollars on produce. Our portion of that, just in produce value that came on the market wholesale was twenty eight million, seven hundred and eighty four thousand. So we're approximating about sixteen percent market share for our produce within this M S A. Seems like a lot, but what it really represents to me is we have a lot of growth opportunity to get more farmers and more ag onto the W N C Farmers Market. This information is baseline to new S D A Farm Service Agency Statistics and American Farm Bureau Federation Statistics. The interesting thing is to talk about utilization within a forty five minute drive of the W N C Farmers Market, there's five, over five thousand registered F S A farms. Now, who knows what the history is on that? That's just the bottom line number. How many active farms in there? We've got to go in and sort that data out and get that information. But on general, about eight percent of any of those active F S A farms sell on Farmers Market, tailgate markets and roadside stands. So that's four hundred and seven farms just within driving distance of the Farmers Market. We're servicing ninety five. So that means we have three hundred and twelve active farms out there, particularly in Buncombe County and surrounding areas that we could be supporting, uh, more effectively. Capital investment, this is a really key point. We're fast approaching fifty year anniversary in, in twenty twenty seven, which we will celebrate. Uh, year to date, we've had an allocation of state funds of three point five million. We've completed two point three million in projects on the market and we have another one point two million of identified works in progress. We want to clean up our waste stream. There's a lot of other things that we want to do to drive that more environmental compliance. Uh, requests for funding in twenty three, twenty four, we know we're going into the biannual budget process with the state legislature. Back to those wholesale buildings, we've asked for thirteen million dollars in renovations. That is really important for us. Buncombe County, Western North Carolina, if we can get those wholesale buildings converted to cold chain, then that means that we can be a stronger, more, uh, consistent supplier of produce in the area for school, schools, institutions and restaurants. Right now, there's a lot of those businesses that have to opt out because we don't have the cold chain for those businesses and they require that. And so that's an opportunity that we can grow the market and support our community even better. There's also, uh, capital request, uh, for Truck Shed Two. It's our, one of our largest drive through sheds. We want to upgrade that, uh, make it major improvements. And this coming Spring Festival this year, April twenty second, twenty third, we're going to convert it to a walk in shed so that people can park around it and walk in. It's going to be a really cool thing for us to be able to do. We, on the capital investment, the, the key takeaway there is we're efficient in the money that the state is allocating to us. We're putting it towards key projects that drive revenue and support and upgrades for our farmers, for our vendors and for our community. There's a lot of, you know, focus sometimes on these capital budgets. If you sit them on, if you sit on them too long, the state pulls them back. So guess what? I've been spending money making improvements, so we're looking really good right now as far as the coming year ahead. So how do we tie in? I took this right off of your twenty year plan, preserve Buncombe County's working farms and forest. Uh, the W N C Farmers Market, this is the real kind of message I want to deliver. We have an opportunity to partner with you guys, a strategic partnership in supporting mutual goals to promote working farms, sustainable land and really preserve that. And we can have easements, we can have tax credits and all that kind of stuff, but if farmers aren't profitable, it really won't matter so much. So we have an opportunity to bring farmers on the market and make better margin. We just finished up a conference with the, um, North Carolina Tomato Growers Association. N C State came in and did a budget analysis of twenty twenty three forecast on input costs for tomato growers. Their costs are going up thirty one percent this year. So can a tomato grower, I mean, can he yield over forty thousand pounds per acre to cover all of his costs and then deliver it to a packing house? That's going to be tough, right? But they could come onto the Farmers Market and sell to suppliers at a better margin and be more profitable. So that's the kind of calculus we're trying to show and demonstrate to farmers that they can come on the market. I can't deliver their buyers to them, but if they communicate that they're on the market, I think they'll do much better than necessarily taking it to a packing house. But that said, the last point on that is optimize data to prioritize, prioritize policies and programs. There is nothing more key, I think, than that point right there, and that's what I've tried to show you today briefly. We're now tracking data and getting information off the market, off the economic impact and for our farmers. And that's the data that we need to really drive, uh, you know, successful programs and supporting, uh, uh, the farm community and farmers in general. Uh, we don't have all that information right now, but we're working on honing it and getting it into focus so that we, and I hope that we can collaborate with the Buncombe County Commissioner, uh, to kind of fine, fine tune that work. But never, nevertheless, we are a strategic partner. I mean, there's no better place for you guys to have a narrative of, you know, for farmers to sell on the W N C Farmers Market so that they can be more profitable and successful. The last point here is we can be a key enabler with the Western North Carolina Ag ecosystem to assist working farms to operate profitably. And we will, and we want to be that regional epicenter for ag products. That's the reputation, that's the vision that I have and my team has, that when anything comes up, they want to take it to the W N C Farmers Market. Last slide. Jennifer, can you help me with the handing out those awards real quick? And then I'll show you this one. Key partner that we worked with is the W N C Nature Center. You guys may have saw the news coverage on that. What a cool program to partner with the Nature Center. And we have an educational department. We have this kiosk, talks about all types of things in terms of, uh, farming, jobs in agriculture, how the food's used for animals on the market. We have a map of the Farmers Market. We have our garden that we're helping people understand how to grow vegetables and, you know, educate and inform. And all of this is just a really cool program and a long-term partnership with, uh, the W N C Na-, uh, sorry, I walked away from the mic. The W N C Nature Center. These are all the partners that worked with us, Nature Center, A P I posters, Mountain Growers, the Farmers Market, N C D A and Jesse Israel, and then assigned companies as well. So it was a real collaborative effort there to do that. We handed out, I handed out just a poster, I mean, an award real quick. What happened to my slide? Oh, there it is. Creating the best in agriculture, I mean, that's our, that's our tagline and we delivered it last year. We won best place to buy produce in Asheville. How cool is that? The stats on that are pretty significant. Let me get those for you real quick. Sorry. The survey is, uh, run by Saga Communications, which owns the Asheville Radio Group. It's an annual survey. It's a third party vendor that does the research. Twenty three hundred companies in Western North Carolina were, uh, nominated across two hundred and thirty six categories. In twenty twenty two, it was the first time that Farmers Markets were considered in that survey process. Uh, there were forty two thousand, five hundred and twenty eight participants, constituents across Buncombe County and the Asheville M S A that participated in the survey. The Farmers Market category received six thousand, seven hundred and fifty nine votes and we won. So cool. So we're working hard to deliver on our tagline, curating the best in agriculture. And as our mission statement, supporting the region's farmers and food producers who deliver the highest quality products to our community. So that's the snapshot of the W N C Farmers Market. Any questions or thoughts or?
Well, I want to say thank you so much, Phil. I appreciate your enthusiasm and your vision, which is wonderful that you really just jumped in there and I see lots of wonderful improvements. I've been hearing good things. I, uh, am very glad of the partnerships that you're doing with the Nature Center and others. I really like that collaborative spirit that you have. And I'm glad you also mentioned the cold chain because that is something that I do continually hear as a need for us here in this area around food security and, and all issues around agriculture. So I'm glad that you spotted that.
I hope I get the money.
I do too.
We'll be pushing for it. So you guys can help too if somebody comes up with a dinner hour or cocktails, uh, deals. Hey, you know, that Farmers Market needs some capital. So, well, thank you so much. It's a privilege to be here. I'm, you guys, I hope you're proud of your W N C Farmers Market. Come see us, Spring Festival and we'll show you around, okay? Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Phil. Great job. Appreciate it. All right. The next item is discussion of the quiet zone concept for the railroad crossing. Michael Free will share some information on this topic.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is a interesting change of pace. This has to do with a private rail crossing of Norfolk Southern near, uh, exit fifty five down in Swanonoa, uh, number nine, five, one, one, three, one D. Uh, I understand from, uh, their attorneys at Van Winkle that this has been a quiet rail crossing for years and years and years, as far back as anyone can remember, meaning that the trains will come through and they don't have to blow their whistle. So if you could go to the next slide, Nick, if you've got it. And he's working on that. So M S D, as you, as you may know, have been working very hard for the last several years to redo, retrofit and replace a bunch of the M S D sewer lines up the Swanonoa Valley. So the hotels, as you saw in the previous image, are scattered around here. Four hotels are represented by Van Winkle. That dot is the private rail crossing. Right now, there's just a locked gate. And so that's for access for M S D into the area where they can do any maintenance that might be needed. There's also one, uh, one billboard down there as, as far as I understand. So what they're asking the county to do is to cooperate and make a request to Norfolk Southern to say Norfolk Southern, request on behalf of these hoteliers that you make this a quiet rail crossing, which would mean, I think that they put up some of the lights, warning lights, and then the railroad would have it in their system that, and the engineers would know to run through there quiet without blowing their whistles in the middle of the night, which appears to be a problem for some of the guests that are trying to sleep in that area. So this, uh, crossing was redone by M S D per agreement with, uh, Norfolk Southern a few years ago. So since then, it has been making, uh, it has been allowed rail crossing. So the request would be if you want this on consent or regular agenda in a couple of weeks, if you want to make that request of Norfolk Southern, it'd be my suggestion that you not commit any funds to it because it could be very expensive if they put in a bunch of, of apparatus, but that, that should not be necessary since it's a private crossing, it's going to remain a private crossing. So just looking for direction, how you would like to play it in a couple of weeks or not at all.
So that, I think you're speaking to part of my question when I was reading through that. So the cost of safety measures, you're thinking that there won't be any cost?
Uh, I, I really don't know.
Okay.
I just suggested in the resolution, you not commit to any funding. I know that in some municipalities and local governments, they purposefully request quiet zones for residential districts and they end up paying several hundred thousand dollars to put in lights and arms. Uh, but this is a private crossing and right now there's just a locked gate and it's a very simple bump, 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 and you're in there to do your emergency work for M S D and then get out. So it shouldn't, but I don't know that you'd want to commit to it.
And then are there any other legal implications that we need to be aware of?
Well, Norfolk Southern is going to work very hard, I know, to make sure that any crossing they have is going to remain safe. I think maybe this private crossing had fallen off their radar. I don't know for sure. I couldn't get to the people that could reply to that at Norfolk Southern, but the people I did speak with said, once we knew M S D was using it, we had to start blowing our horn to come through, whether or not they, it's marked or not. But again, it wasn't a marked flashing gate, it's just a locked gate like you'd have at the end of a driveway right now.
Is this something that County Commission has done before or?
Uh, this is brand new to me. But Norfolk Southern and their website indicates that it, the request is made from time to time.
If it's made from, like, from local government?
Yes. Yes. Very often they just say, we want to have a quiet zone, please put it in here. This is not your request, obviously, or that of the county, it's that of the hotelier. So if there's any cost, I would just suggest that we make that clear in the resolution to Norfolk Southern and go from there.
Would us going forward on this resolution preclude us from doing a similar thing in a different residential part of town or am I overthinking? Is that, is that a?
Precluded? I, I don't think so, not at all. Because e- each rail crossing, I think, would have to go through its own safety review and inspection and analysis as to how to best make it safe and.
There's no cap on we're blowing our one shot at doing this with?
I wouldn't think so, no, sir.
Are we, are there any other quiet zones designated in Buncombe County that you're aware of?
Not that I know of. Their, their site didn't show it like that. It took some work, but I was able to find a site that showed railroad crossings around the county and you could zero in on them, but it didn't indicate whether they were quiet or not.
The only place, I remember when I was on city council, a long time ago, I think it was discussion about making the River Arch District a quiet zone with all the rail activity down there and use for redevelopment efforts. I don't think it ever was designated as one though, as far as I know, but there was discussion about it, so. So if there are costs to implement this for, for whatever reason, um, the hotels are asking to do this, they would be the main beneficiaries of it. I mean, is, is, is it the working assumption that they would invest to do it or, I mean, I don't see any downside to it, as long as there's not a financial cost for us to do it. The hotels think are saying like, we would, we would really benefit from this. Is it, is it the assumption that they might contribute to it or is it just, we just need to see what they, ideas they come up with and then figure it out from there?
I had that discussion with, uh, their attorney at Van Winkle and said, hey, from my reading, this could cost several hundred thousand dollars. And just so you know, I'm not going to recommend that the county promised to spend any money for this, uh, quiet crossing. So if there's any cost, it'd be the hoteliers to bear. And he, he was under the impression, that's Craig Justice, that there shouldn't be any cost because it's a private crossing. But my review of the Norfolk Southern literature and the Federal Railroad Association didn't show that necessarily, so I couldn't really figure that out. But I would make that plain in the draft resolution, if, if that's what you want to consider.
I just don't want to have any false expectations set up. I mean.
Right.
They're the ones that would benefit from it. So if there is maybe, and maybe there will be no cost, in which case it's just no problem. But if there is, then, uh, I think they would need to be the ones to finance the improvements.
I'll be sure to make that clear.
You're going to put that in the resolution?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir, I can.
So my recommendation would be not to put it on the consent agenda, just so that if we have some more time to also think about it. I think that would be preferable to me. And then that way we can make sure, because I just want to make sure there's no cost to us nor any kind of legal implications. So I, I'd just like to have a little bit more time to ensure that piece of it.
Okay.
And does that give you a little more time too, to dig in a little deeper on that as well?
Well, I can talk to Mr. Justice to just make sure he understands, uh, where, where this board's headed, at least based on this discussion. We've got one representative here from one of the hotels, I'm sure he'll be able to come in two weeks.
Sure, sure. Come, come on up and, um, yeah, great. Thank you.
Hey, Commissioners. My name's H P Patel. First of all, I want to say thank you for appointing me to the T D A Board last year. Uh, as a body, I, I would like to thank you for that and it's a great honor to, to sit on that board. I've owned the Comfort Inn on exit fifty five. I've owned it for twenty two years. Uh, so just to give you a timeline, twenty nineteen, M S D was doing the King Creek Sewer Project, which they're boring under railroad, boring under I forty to do that sewer line. So, uh, this crossing is right behind our hotel. So there used to be a campground, uh, on the other side of railroad track, uh, which is the only parcel you can access. So the campground is the only parcel in between I forty and the railroad. So that parcel is actually owned by my company. So nobody is allowed to actually go on that, go through that crossing. So there's a locked gate, um, there's no signs there, um, to blow their horn, but for some reason it's on a map after Nor-, after M S D wanted to use that as a construction access. So, um, in twenty nineteen, they started blowing the horn at night and obviously guests don't like to be waken up by a horn. So we tried to call Norfolk Southern, we've, we've tried to, we've, we've actually contacted people at Norfolk Southern, we've contacted public safety and they're, the only answer I get is if it's a private crossing, they're not supposed to blow the horn, but, I mean, they're, they're their own governing agency. There's, it's tough to get anybody to change anything there. That's why we, uh, engaged Van Winkle and Craig Justice to kind of just help us, guide us through this. And that's how he found out, um, counties do have the ability to issue quiet zones. And from my understanding, this is a common thing throughout the country, even in our county, that there are quiet zones. But obviously, if you have a, if you have cars passing through a crossing, there has to be a lot of apparatus that has to be installed. And even if they tell us to put a moving gate up, the hotels would, would pay for that. We're just asking for, for guidance to get through to the Norfolk Southern and tell them this is a private crossing and needs to be a quiet zone. And we're not talking about shutting down the horn all day long, but at least through nighttime, so it doesn't disturb the local residents or the hotels. And the, there's, there's over three hundred and sixty hotel rooms on that interchange. So I just wanted to give you a little history.
So none of the hoteliers are expecting the, the county to financially invest in it, but just to write the letter to bring the issue to their attention to hopefully focus on it. And if there is a cost, which there may not be, but if there is, then the hotels will be prepared to help.
Exactly.
Take care of it.
Exactly.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions? All right. Well, um, we'll have this on the agenda for the next meeting. If there's any other questions, we can talk further about it at that time.
I'll put it under new business.
Okay. Thanks, Michael. All right. The next item on the agenda is an update on the McCor- update and discussion on the McCormick Field efforts. And Tim Love is here to help us out with this.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Quick update for you today on the McCormick Field project. Uh, just wanted to also recognize there are a few folks in the audience with us today that you probably recognize. Uh, we've got reps from the City of Asheville, uh, the Asheville Tourist Team and of course the T D A. But, um, let's go ahead and get started. I've got a few slides. Much of the content we'll see today shouldn't be new to you. It's been reviewed in public during work sessions, either with the Buncombe County Commissioners or the City Council. But just wanted to make sure you had the latest and greatest information, but, uh, please feel free to stop me at any time. So in terms of our current status, uh, this board, uh, commission reviewed, uh, the project at the December thirteenth Commissioners Budget Retreat. Um, additionally, since then, uh, City Council has reviewed, um, in depth during a work session on February fourteenth. And during that work session, uh, city staff presented, you know, a lot of history about, uh, the tourists, how long they've been in our community, uh, the impact in our community, but also financial scenarios and a vision for the future of this facility, uh, in our community. Uh, those financial scenarios are summarized with these two bullets, but I've, I've got additional slides where we can see the numbers in more detail. But essentially, uh, there are two ideas that have been proposed, um, to proceed in terms of financial scenarios and in terms of a project. Uh, the first is the quote unquote full project, which is about thirty seven point five million dollars in cost. Uh, when that is financed over time, has a total, uh, value of about fifty six point one million dollars with interest. Uh, the minimum project, uh, is less than that. It's a twenty nine point two million dollar project that is about forty three million dollars over time when you factor in interest. Again, this interest, you know, this is calculated from, you know, typical debt financing that we would see from many local government facilities. What I'd add to this though, you know, conversations are continuing, uh, many conversations between the city, uh, the team, the tourists, uh, the T D A and, and our staff. Uh, but as we proceed into the scenarios, one thing to be aware of, um, there's no additional revenue that's been added into these scenarios, uh, that would be represented, representative of potential state grants, uh, which we've heard some discussion about or. or event revenue that may be generated from additional events that are hosted at a potentially renovated stadium. So just wanted you to be aware that those variables are not included. In terms of the project costs, I've got a snippet here, and so this is a, a direct screenshot out of the, the City Council presentation, but just wanted you to get a sense of what's the scope of each project. And so on the left, we have the full project, which comes to about $37.5 million in the yellow box at the bottom, and then on the right, we have the minimum project. And so I'll just walk you through at a high level, not meaning to get into the weeds on this, but the Major League Baseball mandates. So these are the items that MLB baseball has said have to get done for a facility to host minor league events. That cost is about $19.6 million, and that does not factor in any interest, that's just the, the cost to do the work, based on estimates as of today. Next up, we have facility operational minimum needs, so think about this as like the maintenance on any facility that a, a local government would own. And so here we have about $5.6 million, those numbers are constant across the full project and the minimum project. Where we start to see some variation between the two projects is when we look at the strongly recommended pro sports and the fan amenities buckets, so these are your third and fourth rows respectively. When we look at the full project, strongly recommended items include video displays, improved ingress and egress, and so, you know, how do you get in and out of the facility? We're looking at suites as well as picnic areas. In the full project, that's about $7 million. In the minimum project, we're looking at removing a lot of that, but talking specifically about picnic areas that could host events, that could make this more of a community asset, where people can come and spend time when they're not at a ballgame. The difference there, you can see, we go from $7 million to about $1.5 million. In terms of fan amenities, the, the full project features interactive displays, as well as a wraparound concourse at $5.25 million, and then in the minimum project, focusing more on the interactive display, which is about $2.5. You know, these assets, you know, when you put them together in the minimum or the full project, the goal of, I believe, city staff and the team is to create a community asset where people can come for other things than baseball. Additionally, it's to create additional revenue opportunities to offset the costs of maintaining this facility and these specific projects. So when we talk about things like interactive display assets, we need to keep in mind that that also impacts our, the ability of the team and the city to potentially have advertisements that can reduce the cost long-term of this project. You can see the total project budgets at the bottom, both of these numbers include contingency, which is the responsible thing to do for anybody managing a project, but wanted you to know that those numbers are also included. A few additional project details, just so you can have some additional context. The minimum and the full projects, quote-unquote, both address MLB mandates, so that's clearly a priority for everyone involved. Both projects also include additional enhancements and renovations. The facility operational minimum needs must be addressed regardless of whether or not we keep baseball in this community. These are just the, the practical facility maintenance items that need to get addressed in any facility, and so those don't go away. That $5.6 million will remain.
Regardless if there's baseball here?
Correct. The facility operational needs, so these are, you know.
I mean, assuming that the facility was still used for some baseball purpose, which, I mean, this is kind of like a worst-case scenario, right? Like, if baseball went away, maybe it wouldn't be, right? Wouldn't it make sense to spend all that money if you don't have a baseball team there?
I, I think there's probably some merit to that, I, I think the, the question would be, if you've got structural concerns with the facility, are, are we comfortable not addressing those over time? I think your point's valid, that if the facility is going to be empty or highly underutilized, then you would spend less there, but there is a, a deferred maintenance cost that must be addressed there.
Right, I mean, I guess it's just, again, this isn't the scenario we're focused on, but if there weren't a baseball team there, this is huge area of downtown Nashville, right, I would think it would be redeveloped for some alternative purpose, rather than keeping an empty baseball field there. But I'm just, again, this is a hypothetical, I don't think we're focused on, but I'll hush.
I think that's valid, without baseball, I think there's a, a different conversation, but I, I haven't, we haven't sort of pursued that conversation, and so I have nothing off of there. In terms of the full project, the key here is you get additional flexibility for different types of community events. And so instead of a facility that's only utilized for, you know, 60-plus games a year, you're thinking about a facility that's used 365 days a year for a variety of events. We list examples here, winter wonderland, in the winter, you know, with things like ice skating rinks or other events, walking areas around the facility, so not quite greenways, but places where people can come, do laps, things of that nature. Also the potential for additional concerts, music opportunities at the field. Many of these opportunities currently aren't available just for the way the, the facility is structured, it's not, it's winterized currently, so there's some changes that would occur there to enable these types of events. Additionally, it would be remiss if I didn't say, you know, the minimum project versus the full project, it takes some revenue generation opportunities off the table that benefit both the city and the team as they are hosting events that could potentially create revenue, like concerts or winter wonderlands, or whatever it is, that could help offset the debt and ultimately the cost of this facility. So spending less potentially means that you'll be able to generate less money in the long term. There have been some numbers thrown around about what the revenue generation opportunities could be for there, but I won't speak to those because we haven't done the projections, and I know the projections are pretty sensitive when you're looking into the future and uncertain about what events you'll actually be able to host. In terms of the details of these two plans, this first slide is the full project. This, again, was presented at the, the City Council Retreat, or excuse me, Work Session. A couple items, I'm just going to go quickly through this, you can see the, the city is at right under $1 million. The team is at an average of $468,000 over a 20-year period. Key to note here is that's an average, and so some years are going to be higher than others. In particular, you can see that, you know, there's, in the early years, the inputs may be lower than those in the out years as you're able to build up events and other revenue opportunities. You can see the county is flat here at $5 million over 20 years, that's $250,000 a year. The TDA comes in at about 1.4, and then we assume no upfront TDA costs. The project is a $35 million project with interest about 56 over time. Moving to the minimum project, here we see the, the City of Asheville's contribution slightly upticks to about $1 million. The team drops down to about 287 as an average, and you can see on the far right how that breaks out, and it's sort of a graduated schedule. County remains flat at $5 million over 20 years. The TDA drops down to a, a smaller portion at 700K for 15 years, which is their debt service amount. But additionally, we're able to add some TDA upfront dollars through a reallocation of about $1.9 million from the Cox Avenue Streetscapes Project, which was awarded in a prior TPDF cycle. When you take those numbers forward, you know, you're looking at a $27 million project that turns into $43 million with interest. So those are the two scenarios that are kind of on the table right now, that city staff and others have pulled together. I wanted to share those with you, they were presented at the February 14th City Council Work Session. Shifting gears out of the financial scenarios, I wanted to address some questions that I've heard from this board, but also here just, you know, walking around town, talking to people, the real questions, as they say. So how do we know the team is going to stay? Like, this is the number one question, if we're going to spend all this money, like, it better be for, for good purpose. There's a few things I want to say here, first off, the team, the tourists, are prepared to sign a 20-plus year lease, and that lease will require them to provide baseball at the facility for the term of that lease. If they break the lease, we know what that looks like in terms of, you know, legal action would be pursued. I'm not saying that's going to happen, but it's a contract, and so we know that.
Who's the actual entity that would sign the lease?
It is the LLC, and name I do not recall off the top of my head completely, Dewine Seeds. Silver Dollar Baseball, yeah.
And have we looked at the credit worthiness of that entity?
I cannot speak to the, the credit worthiness, they are registered with the Secretary of State, for sure.
Yeah, I just think it's a relevant part of the conversation, right? I understand we can have a legally enforceable lease, but if it's not with a credit-worthy business partner, then the ability to actually collect would be, you know, would be in question, right?
Valid question, glad to follow up on it. You're, you're welcome to.
Hey Brian, Brian, come, come, come into the mic, please, so we can, so everyone can hear you, thank you, and thanks for being here too, appreciate it.
Sorry to interrupt, Brian Dewine, I'm the owner of the Asheville Tourist, or the owner of Dewine Seeds Silver Dollar Baseball LLC. We will also provide another business, that will be the grantor of the lease. So we will have two businesses being the grantor, Dewine Seeds and another business, so.
Okay, all right, and there'll be more information on that as the process?
Yes, yes.
Great, thank you so much.
Good deal. So we'll capture that information, I think that's a valid question, we'll certainly follow up on it. Next up, so assurances in terms of how the team will stay. The Houston Astros have an agreement with Major League Baseball that extends through 2030. This is a standard agreement with all of the minor league baseball teams, it says that those franchises will exist through 2030. Beyond 2030, we have no assurances, just to be very clear, we've had discussions with baseball, they say they like this market, but we have no certainty beyond that, just to be clear. With Major League Baseball, so that, you know, the, not the franchise itself, but MLB, the league, it's the same kind of agreement, so that minor league agreement, Major League Baseball agreement through 2030. So those are our assurances that we have in, in the current market. Another question that comes up frequently is, can the team be sold, you know, and can the team be relocated? And so, well, we had a discussion with Major League Baseball on this, and what we learned is that any sale or relocation of a team has to be approved by Major League Baseball. And so, Major League Baseball decisions, you know, are based on facility standards, but also target markets. I think the key to understand here is that the tourists themselves, the Astros themselves, can't unilaterally make a decision to leave our community without the approval of Major League Baseball, the league. Major League Baseball has their reasons for being in certain markets, they're not going to give us a guarantee on something of that nature, but we do know that it's not a unilateral decision left to the owners of the tourists. Additionally, MLB recommends including some type of no relocation clause in the lease agreement between the team and the city. And so that's something they suggested we do, Brian was on the call with Chris, and when that was brought up, so. The next big question that comes up is, how can this facility be used as a bigger asset, something bigger than baseball? And, you know, we've talked a little bit about potential examples already, we've got some screenshots that have been presented by the, the city staff, but potential ideas include concerts, you know, the winter wonderland that we described, ice skating, additional baseball clinics, high school games, and more. Some of these things currently already happen, you know, there are certain clinics and high school games, things like that, already happening. I think it's about increasing, but also viewing the asset as a year-long asset, as opposed to a baseball asset. Those are just a few of the questions that have frequently come up, we've got some other questions in the appendix about, you know, the attendance of the stadium, financial responsibilities of the different players and things like that. But those are the ones that I wanted to touch on with y'all, but glad to take any additional questions if you have them.
Thanks, this is really helpful. Do you know, under the terms of the proposed 20-year lease, what the annual cost would be to lease that facility? I believe it's a dollar a year currently?
Yes, it's currently a dollar a year, that's.
Do you know what, if it would continue to be a dollar a year?
It will certainly increase, it'll vary based on the model, but the inputs in this particular scenario at the minimum project, the average lease would be about $287,000 in the minimum project. In the larger project, it would be that $468,750 number, and that's.
Does that mean then that the tourist contribution would actually be their lease payment?
That, that would be their primary contribution, for sure. I think there are details that are in the lease about capital improvements over time. I would like to follow up on that to make, as to whether or not that's included in that number, or if that's separate, I think that's.
Thanks for any clarification you can provide on that.
Yeah.
Now, Tim, what triggers that lease every year? Is it based on the income of the team, or what? Because, you know, when you average it out, you know, one year it could be $25,000, or we know another, twice, three or four times that. But what triggers the average lease?
Sure, and I don't have the answer, I'm glad, Brian, if you'd like to step up, I think the question is.
Yeah, I'd like to know that.
Yep, is this, is the lease structured in a way that there are annualized a defined payment schedule?
It's a defined payment, I can tell you, if you go look at that lease, we'll be able to tell you exactly what, what you're paying each year. It is defined payment, laid out in the length of the lease, averaging the $468 that Tim mentioned. And the lease payment is the contribution for the construction too, so the lease payment is applied towards the, the debt. But it's, it's not contingent on attendance or revenue, that is a set lease payment.
Okay. And Brian, since you're kind of with us anyway, why don't you hang up for a minute? And Brian and I haven't really coordinated on these specific questions, but I think one of the questions was, is your sole contribution, this $468 as an example, is that considered your lease payment? Are there additional contributions for capital and things like that?
The $468 is our lease payment, which goes towards the construction. There's also some additional clauses in the lease, such as if we don't bring in X amount of fans for outside non-baseball guests, there's a penalty for that, we pay 50 cent per fan after a certain amount fee. We also contribute about $1.5 million into capital, X projects through the, throughout the lease, it's a rollover, but the $468 is the main lease payment, yes.
And, and Brian, the, the tourist organization in the, in the financial arrangement, basically absolutely collecting all the revenue from the baseball games, for the non-baseball events that occur at McCormick Field, does, does the baseball organization get some of those, or do, like, if the city set up a concert series, does, does that revenue accrue, accrue to the city, or how do the various non-game-direct kind of revenue opportunities get divvied up?
Yeah, this, the city is going to be able to put on concerts in our offseason, really September, October, and in that case, they will be the promoter, and they will bring in all the revenue, there will be a food and beverage share with the team, since it will be our food and beverage operation, so, but they're keeping all the ticket revenue, and obviously, they're paying any costs that go with it too, but they're the main benefactor, benefactor of a concert.
Of the concerts, and then other activities, people talk about, you know, if there's weddings or events and things like that held there, those would be, the, the tourist organization would benefit from those types of revenue?
Yes, yes, if, if we did a private wedding, we would benefit for it. If we put on a winter fest and we took on the, you know, the risk of buying the lights and everything, we would benefit from the financial gain of that, or the loss of it, so.
All right. Amina?
Yeah, so I know we're talking about renovations, et cetera, but is there a plan for ongoing maintenance once, should this be approved, once it is approved and completed, so that this situation doesn't occur again?
Yes, there is, there's a set amount in the lease negotiations of how much will be spent each year in maintenance. There is also proposed additional in year seven and 14, I believe, without looking at it, where additional renovations would occur, kind of major-esque renovation, so in 22 years, we're not in the same place. Year seven, year 14, we do some upgrades again.
Thank you, Brian.
May I ask a quick question?
Yeah, sure, Barbara.
Brian, can you clarify, who's responsible for those upgrades in year seven and 14?
Um, as of right now, it is the city that's responsible for them, and we don't have any upgrades picked out. We just kind of penciled in, thinking year seven, year 15, we'll probably need to do some things, so they're responsible for those. We are responsible for kind of putting X amount into a capital fund each year, which then we either spend, or we roll over in, in the case we want to do bigger projects.
And they're on board with this, being the city?
Yes, the, the year seven, the year 14, I can't speak for them on that part. We've been talking about how to handle year seven, year 14, so, I, I don't want to speak for them, and Chris just had to leave for a neighborhood meeting, so.
Okay, but the conversation is occurring about ongoing maintenance?
Yes, 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 and there's also an ongoing maintenance budget that's going to be in the lease too, for just everything, you know, little things, so.
So I think that's my second question, is what happens and who's responsible then, should something happen at another event?
You mean like a concert? You mean, like, a concert?
Mm-hmm.
Um, what do you mean, something happens? Example?
Say, you know, it's on, it's on the field, and part of the grounds are, I don't want to say destroyed, because that feels very harsh, but things happen.
Basically, whoever, whoever's going to gain from that event would be also responsible for an expense.
Okay.
So if you're going to benefit, then obviously you're taking the financial risk, is the way I look at it. As far as the daily maintenance of the ballpark, the example I always use is, if the toilet's clogged, our staff goes and clogs, or goes and plunges it. If the toilet falls off the wall, then we call the city. So that's kind of the relationship about the daily maintenance of the ballpark.
Are there any lingering concerns about the MLB settlement payout in the class-action lawsuit, and how that intersects with sort of the future of minor league teams, or, just wondering if there are any dangling threads on that that might impact how this moves forward?
No, we don't, we don't really see that impacting at all. We do, at some point in our future, do expect to be minor league, to have minor league baseball players unionized, but other than that, no, we don't expect that to affect us.
Thanks.
You guys got me, drill me. What else you got? Come on.
So in terms of the city being on board, so obviously, there's all these discussions going on with the city. They're the owner of the facility, but the City Council itself actually hasn't voted yet, so there's all these discussions going on, but they haven't formally made decisions on these yet. This is kind of the plan that's in front of them right now, right?
Correct. Everything, I guess, I've been referencing is the plan that we've worked on with city staff.
And the city might vote on this at their next meeting, or it might be a subsequent meeting. I mean, it's getting, it's getting close to make decisions, right?
Yes.
So that might actually happen at their next meeting, or their subsequent meeting after that. Is that your sense, it's the next meeting or two?
My understanding is it's the 14th or 28th.
Okay. All right. I mean, so part of the question would be, if we, so we're having a briefing meeting, obviously, we don't vote on issues at our briefing meeting, but we could have this on our agenda at our next meeting, right? So if the City Council votes at their next meeting, then that will, that step will have already been taken in a formal way. If it's at their next meeting, then we might actually vote, you know, prior to the city voting, which I would say, if it turns out that way, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with it either way. I think it could be helpful for the, I mean, there's multiple players involved in the process, so as the owner of the city's, in some ways, kind of the lead public agency on this, but if we needed to, I guess I'm saying, I'd be happy for us to go ahead and make decisions at our next meeting, is where I would be at on the process.
Support that.
Commissioners, other questions? And the county's, the county's commitment, so the city would be issuing the debt on the project, and then they would be using the various revenue streams from the lease payments to, so what would be the, what would be the legal mechanism that we would enter into with the city in order to pledge, you know, a financial commitment over time towards the project? What would that actually be?
Yep. An interlocal agreement, and that's between us and the city, for sure.
Okay, an interlocal agreement, and the TDA would also enter into an interlocal agreement to pledge, to make a financial pledge towards the project as well.
That's correct. And the, you know, the TDA will have their cycle, and I've got some dates here where you can see at the bottom, the TDA, so tentatively, a presentation to TDA in April, and then following their typical product development cycle, but with a defined agreement with contributions in it, matching those that we saw today.
All right.
Hopefully.
Was there anything else you needed from us today around this?
I think the key was understanding where y'all are in terms of level of support, and if you want us to bring this forward at the next meeting. It sounds like, from the chair, that maybe we are bringing this forward at the next meeting?
Is everyone supportive of, let's take, planning to take, planning to take this up to actually vote on the county's plans in terms of financial participation in the project at the next regular meeting, so two weeks from today? Sounds like, sounds like that's something we're ready to do?
Okay, great. We will prepare to bring it forward, and then if there's any other questions or items you'd like us to follow up on, I'm glad to do that. I took some actions today, but we'll bring those forward when we meet again.
One other question I have. The increase in the, the increase in the Major League Baseball requirements, in terms of the investments required to meet the Major League requirement, so that increased from $13 million estimated last year to, I think, nineteen, over, a little over $19 million today. Did the requirements change, or does that, is that a reflection of, you know, things are more expensive to build now? That's affecting a lot of different kinds of capital projects, or what's the reason for the difference?
Yeah, those prices, the original 13 was, you know, projected in 2021. At this point, we're projecting to not do this construction until after the 2024 season, so it's inflation, projection of cost. Some of the stuff was kind of tied together too much, so if you didn't do one thing, what actually added to the cost of the Major League Baseball side?
Okay.
The main thing is inflation and construction costs is out of control.
The scope of it, the requirements themselves didn't really change, it's more about...
The requirements did not change at all. The only requirement change was a little bit more netting required for fan safety, but that's pennies, you know? But basically, that was the only requirement that's changed, and then nothing is expected to change, too, so.
Okay. All right, thanks. Any other questions? Commissioners, or any comments at this time? All right. Brian, thanks for being here. We appreciate it. Tim, thanks for the updates. I plan on taking it up at our next regular meeting. All right, commissioners, that is everything we had on our agenda for our meeting today, so let's adjourn, and we'll reconvene at 5 o'clock for our regular, regular commission meeting.